I had the privilege to be asked to come by and moderate the event tonight. Although, given the organization of it, I don't expect I'll be terribly busy. I just want to go over a couple of things very quickly. It's sent in the directions to me. I'm supposed to give you to take your two minutes, talk about yourself, and I'll introduce the next person. So we're going to start with Keith Alexander. Keith, you would take your two minutes and share a little bit about yourself for the host.
Hello. I think it's a really good idea to do this and have everybody in here to talk about it. In the past, there's been pizza and politics and things like that. This is sort of a nice forum, particularly people who are interested in the school system coming out and talking about that specifically, so we can keep the issues in. My wife and I moved to that town about 16 years ago, and we moved to Newtown specifically because of the education system. We did a lot of research ahead of time. We wanted to find the best town in the area so that we could move in and stay and get our kids the best education we could get them in the area. And we have two children in the system now, and I want to make sure that Newtown continues to offer the programs that my kids have already benefited from and are continuing to benefit. When we had our kids when they were younger, they were in Sandy Hook School, and that was back when each town, each school had their own website. So when my wife and I started volunteering at school, what I told them was, "I'd like to try and help out and update your website." So I got to work with Donna Peja and update their website, and I got to know some of the district staff and feel good about being involved with them. Then I moved on and helped out some of the PTAs with their websites, and then worked on the PTA's geography program for many years, updating maps and doing things like that. So I really enjoyed being involved, but then, as our kids got older, there was less involvement to happen. So as there was less involvement, I found myself going to or vegetation meetings and getting interested in budget classes and things like that. So when the position came open last November, I went ahead and tried so that I could get more directly involved.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Laura Mayne. Laura?
My name is Laura Mayne, and I have worked in the field of education for over 20 years as a classroom teacher, as a teacher of the gifted, and also as an instructional specialist. I'm currently a doctoral student in instructional leadership at Western Connecticut State University. I hold a six-year degree in educational leadership from Sacred Heart University. I hold a master's degree in early childhood and elementary education from Bank Street College, and I also hold an English bachelor's degree from Cornell University. I have certifications in Connecticut and Newark, and I'm certified to work as an administrator and also as a teacher in the state of Connecticut, and I'm certified to work as a school building leader in the state of Newark. I've served locally on the executive board of the Children's Adventure Center for over 10 years. I'm also a member of the Newtown Schools Advisory Board and created and contributed to the Virtual Family Resource Center. I have been an active member of Trinity Church for over 10 years as well, and there I've served as a lecturer, a chalice minister, and also a church school teacher. Recently, I published an article on the Common Core Standards in Math in the Early Childhood Education Journal, and I frequently give professional presentations on a variety of educational topics, both in my current district and also in the region. I grew up in Ridgefield, and I have lived in Newtown with my family for over 15 years.
Thank you very much, Laura. Cody McCubbin.
My name's Cody McCubbin. I've lived here for about a year now. Me and my wife have actually just moved here recently, so actually I have two sons that are just about to go into the school system. It's just five and four. Actually, they're here in the audience, two little boys in the back. So a little bit about me. So I have, I'm a finance major. I have an undergrad in finance from Indiana University, have my MBA in finance from DePaula University out of Illinois. And currently, my role is, I work down in Stanford, commute every day on the merit, which everybody else in the community has. But basically, my job is I work for one of the largest energy companies out of Norway, and we're an international company, and we both, basically, my job, my responsibility is to look at our financial statements of the counterparties we do business with and determine the creditworthiness and the financial strength of the companies we do business with. And this has pretty much been my role throughout my entire career. I've done this with other mutual funds and other kind of investment firms as well. So a little bit about me. So, you know, why you might ask, why I might be interested in the Board of Education. Well, of course, I have some selfish reasons. I have two children, and they're going into it. But also, you know, I believe that my expertise in finance can really help the Board of Education and meet their financial needs and understand where we could enhance the budget and where we could actually be able to be more flexible and actually be more, have more ability in understanding our finances.
Thank you, Cody. Next is Eric. Eric?
Hi, good evening. I'll try to do this a little bit different. I typically do, but I like to ask the audience a question first. And just with a show of hands, how many of you strongly believe that children in Newtown, all children in Newtown, are learning skills that will help enable them to advance to college and careers after graduating high school? Just give a show of hands. If you believe that new, strongly believe that Newtown children are going to be prepared. All right, no, leave your hands up for the, okay. I need those folks over there to keep their hands up. Everybody else here, put your hands down. Okay? With the special ed survey that was put out recently, that's the amount of parents of students with disabilities who believe that same question. That's part of why I'm running. We need to look at and help our students with disabilities, our parents, our families, promote these students' education, because they are the ones who are going to be paying taxes in the future and helping our town move forward, helping our communities move forward, and also, more importantly, choosing our nursing homes. So I want to make sure that we can help these students move on with their lives too. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Next is Laura Roach.
Hello, everyone. Thank you to the Newtown Schools, PTA, and PTSA for hosting the Board of Education Candidate Leadership Forum. Thank you for giving us all an opportunity to be heard and to speak to the public. My name is Laura Roach, and I'm running for the, you know, it's funny, in this whole process, the hardest problem I had was going out in the current job because I'm a stay-at-home mom. And that didn't sound like, how do I put that on paper, I'm a stay-at-home mom? My friends kidded around with me, and they said, "Put down domestic feebler, put down see if they're in the household." But what I came to gripe, what I came to really think that was the most important job is that I'm a parent and I'm a school volunteer, and that I am in the school volunteering every day, and, well, weekly, I should say. When my kids were at, was nursing school, I was on the RISD Learning Board's board for five years, so I have experience with the board. I worked on many fundraising initiatives for Sandy Hook School. I led the Family Fund Picnic Day, which is now, which at the time actually funded all the smart boards for the fourth grade. I helped pioneer a phone alert system back in the day when we were still using phone alert systems. I volunteered for that completely for nine years. I led the PTA newsletter, I was on the PTA board for four years. I was on the rescheduling committee when there was problems with the schedule over at Reed, and I advocated for Reed families, and I organized 130 parents to speak on and advocate on their behalf. And that's actually what brought me to the board. I felt that on that side, where you guys all sit, it's very hard to get your, what you want said, and I think being on this side, I can help advocate that. I have a background in business finance, I have a background in sales, and I think that will help as well in regards to making the best decisions possible. I have been a resident for 12 years. I have three children within the school system, and I really want to be an advocate for you and speak for you and understand all of your concerns and everything that you are frustrated with or happy with, and I want to be there for you.
Thank you, Laura. And my last for this part will be Dan Shing.
Ladies and gentlemen, to give you a sense of where I'm coming from, I have to begin with my parents. My mother and her four siblings spent most of their childhoods at the St. Francis Orphanage Island in New Haven. My mother's education never went beyond the eighth grade. My father died short day after returning from World War II, and my mother never remarried. She did, however, impress upon me the vital importance of an education, something she never had the opportunity to experience. I listened to my mother and passed the same message she had for me on to my children. An education is priceless. It is important to me and to you and your children. Its importance to me and to you and your children cannot be overstated. This conviction is the engine that drives me and everyone else in the world who has experienced poverty and does not want to live with it again. I came to Newtown 43 years ago and am a retired high school English teacher at Massey High School. With 35-year service and currently edits academic papers in the Yale University community for faculty, postdoctoral fellows, and graduate students, most from throughout the world. My business name is Grammar Man. I did my undergraduate work at Fordham College and have attended several graduate schools since then. My two children attended Newtown Schools K through 12, as well as college and graduate schools. My daughter Megan is fluent in Mandarin and was Motorola's liaison to the Beijing government for four years. Megan is currently a Board of Education member in New Hampshire, where she oversees the activities of my two grandchildren. My son, Dan Jr., is living in New Haven. He's a civil engineer and a licensed architect, as well as a furniture designer and builder. More importantly, he recently became a father in addition to being the first Newtown resident to win the Rooster Run. My wife, Roberta, is a St. Rose Rectory Staff Member, artist and SCAN Board Member, and Roberta and I are both members of the St. Rose Choir.
Way to wrap it up there. All right, we're, that, next, on to the part of the program I lose to.
Should I read Mr. Boros's bio?
Oh, sure. If you have that shit, go ahead, Dan.
All right. Acoustically, I think this room can hear me. From Mr. John Boros. Having taught in the Newtown Public Schools for 35 years, I bring to the table a wealth of knowledge about the philosophy of the district and how it could be better implemented. Seventeen years teaching math and science in a cluster setting and then 18 years in the Discovery Gifted Program enabled me to posture myself with parents, administration, and staff to understand the current pulse of the town in terms of perception of our school system. The concerns of this mega-million-dollar education business presents questions and answers that can be facilitated by someone who knows where to seek correct solutions to serious problems. One should always strive to raise the bar. Complacency breeds incompetence and stagnates the mind. While serving the community with patience, compassion, open-mindedness, honesty, and dedication, I look forward to having a positive influence on our children. Again, John Boros.
Thanks, Jen. All right, this, now, we're on to the part of the program I talked about earlier. We have five minutes for the two questions to be addressed. The organizers of the program decided that we're really going to go in alphabetical order on this. I'll still jump up probably to keep the transition going in case there's a time situation which I need to intervene in. Keith, your five minutes begins right now. Good luck.
First question was about the role of Board of Ed. The role of Board of Education is to set policy and direction for a school district. Members of the Board of Ed are involved in many activities: creating and improving policies, goals, standards of conduct, evaluating, adopting educational changes, approving staff changes, serving on hearing panels for student discipline and staff issues, oversight of school facilities, giving direction to the administration, scrutinizing and adopting budget, serving on subcommittees to work in detail on subjects such as contract negotiations. There's a lot of things that the Board of Education is responsible for. All of those things impact day-to-day activities at school. The impact comes through the teachers and staff and the administration, but when the Board approves, say, a curriculum, then it's implemented in the classroom. That's where it's built. It's built daily in the classroom. When the Board makes decisions about student-to-teacher ratios, those decisions have to be made board by the, that affects the classroom, that affects the students every day. The Board sets policies and standards, and those policies and standards are delivered by the teachers and administrators every day. Even things such as dress code, acceptable use of technology, all of those things get delivered on a day-to-day basis. Those kinds of things are how the Board can directly affect what goes on in the school. There's a, there's a lot of things that people want the Board to be able to do, and so the Board has to sit down and think these things out and get them into the school system, and again, into policies, goals, and direction to the administration is what it's done. As far as top objectives of the Board, the top objective of the Board at all times has to be what's in the best educational interest of the students. You start there and you work your way around. Everything needs to look back to that so that when we're, any decisions we're trying to make, we're always reminding ourselves that the decisions have an effect on the students. Again, every day has an effect on the students. You have to think about their everyday effect and their long term. When we're confronted with budget cuts, for instance, which is a major issue, we have to think about how do we do the budget cut with the best action of the students in mind? Can we keep more teachers in the classroom directly involved? Can we do that as well? Another example would be closing a school due to declining enrollment. Something we've been looking at in subcommittee. The current projections show a decline in enrollment throughout the student body over the coming 10 years, and at some point in that period, we may be able to cut back on a school facility and save the town quite a bit of money. But how we go about that has to be by first figuring out when it physically fits and then figuring out how that best education will fit. We've been having discussions as to how you could integrate more students into the exist, not, so more students, and more grades into the existing facility so that we can end up closing one in order to just return that to the town for its town use and save everybody in town money on both sides of the budget. That stuff needs to be well researched, and that's one of the things we're going through, trying to figure out what the details are behind that so we can make sure we make the right decision there. What point we can do that is an educational decision that needs to be on top of the education. We have to watch for educational opportunities anywhere we make a change. We need to preserve and enhance the quality of education as much as possible, but we have to do that, again, by looking individually at the things that we, that we're going to do and saying, "How does that affect the students? How will the students get better education from that? How can we improve their day-to-day, basically, job of being a student and getting the education they need?" And of course, we want to do that because we moved here for that reason. I think a lot of us, not just my family, has moved into Newtown because we knew about Newtown's education, and we had heard that it was good, and then we checked things like the number of people who go on to college from Newtown is one of the high ones. It's a nice thing to look at. You say, "Okay, that's what I want my kids to do. I want them to go on to college. Newtown is a good place to look at that."
Well, thank you very much, Keith. Somebody passed me a note saying that people in the back are having some difficulty in hearing. I believe the two microphones, and I didn't make the arrangements, are for the television or the recording we're doing, not so much for an in-house sound system. So correct me on that. So I'm going to invite anybody who can hear to move forward. There's plenty of room up here. We'll take a moment. I don't think there's any problem hearing if we move forward. This room is sort of designed, I'll ask the people to try and project a little bit more if possible, but there's plenty of seats down in here. All right. We're going to get a chance, who wants to move up, can move up. Okay. This is not coming out of your eyes.
She said it was happening.
We haven't started the timer yet. All right, I think we've tried to accomplish that. Our next candidate is Laura Mayne.
In the book Leadership on the Line: Staying Alive Through the Dangers of Leading, the authors describe the importance of leaders being on the dance floor as well as on the balcony. The day-to-day work in the district is on the dance floor, and that is the work of the staff. They are entrenched in the details and the day-to-day management of the schools. In my professional life, I do this work on a daily basis. The Board of Education rarely ever participates at this level. They are on the balcony overseeing the dancers, helping with the vision, the goals, and the direction of the district. The Board of Education must have a razor-like focus on student achievement. If not, it will get distracted by the minutia and miss the opportunity to lead the district forward. Because I have the professional background in educational leadership, I feel I'm uniquely qualified to serve on the Board of Education. An example of how I'm able to use my professional skills to serve as a Board of Education member is recently, I took the results of the Special Education Parent Survey and compiled a table for the Board of Education with the state data in relationship to the Newtown district data. I included in the table the percent difference, positive or negative, between the Connecticut data and the Newtown data. I believe this information clearly details the specifics of improvements needed in the area of special education. For those of you who are interested in seeing this table, I've placed it on the PAC Family Resource Wiki, which is linked on the district website. The website address is also listed in my bio on the handout tonight. In my opinion, it is the Board of Education's role to ensure that action is taken in relation to these results, as this is their role on the balcony. It is imperative that we meet the standards of our neediest students and families in a manner that is respectful and responsive. I have been advocating for this action for several years and believe I'm qualified to meet the challenges our next Board of Education will face in this area and as well as in many others. As far as the top objectives of the Board of Education, the top objectives of the Board of Education should be improving student outcomes, improving communication, increasing transparency, and supporting the work of the classroom. The first objective, improving student outcomes, includes achievement, social-emotional development, and transition into adulthood. There's a multitude of data available at the district level and on the state website. This data needs to be accessed and analyzed regularly with a focus on continuous improvement. The culture of the Board of Education needs to shift to one which analyzes data on a regular basis and takes action on its results in the form of providing direction and leadership for the district. A second objective should be improving communication at all levels. There needs to be improved communication between the Board of Education and the community, the Board of Education and the district administration, and between the district administration and the parents. The current Board of Education has been plagued with criticism in this area. The community deserves to feel that they have a voice and their concerns need to be heard. Communication requires not just speaking and writing, but also listening. One way to address this is to provide more opportunities for the public to provide input by way of surveys written in oral communications to the Board of Education. This information needs to be regularly sought and valued in the decision-making process. A third objective should be improving transparency. This is particularly evident in the budget process. The community needs to know how money is being spent and on what. The school district should reflect the values and the needs of the community and should be something that taxpayers are proud to support. This can only happen by increasing the amount of information the public is given with regard to the budget. This needs to happen both within object codes and between object codes. The Board of Education and the public needs a detailed budget to better understand and support the mission of the district. This requires an overhaul of the current budget process and will entail a more rigorous accounting both during budget season and throughout the year. What needs to be preserved are the hard-working, dedicated teachers, my son, who's in the back, who work with students every day in the district. They need, they need support and encouragement to do the work they do so they can get the results that the community expects. Funding must be directed toward the classroom and the students, and it is especially important to ensure that this is occurring given the current economic culture. To accomplish these objectives I've spelled out, I believe each Board of Education member should read the Essential School Board Book, Governance in the Age of Accountability. This book gives case studies of exemplary districts leading in a manner that focuses on student results.
Well, thank you very much, Laura. And our next candidate is Cody McCubbin. Cody?
Thanks. Good.
That's good.
Yeah, I did. So anyways, um, you know, as far as Board of Education is concerned, I mean, look at the way the schools run. On a day-to-day basis, I don't think it's very realistic for Board of Education to overlook it. Everything every teacher does or superintendent does on a day-to-day basis needs to be more professional. They don't look at it. You know? I think what it really comes down to, it comes down to culture and expectations. You know, just like any board, any corporation or any board of business, it's, they dictate the culture. They dictate the expectations that are expected from the place, from managers, from everybody else. This is what is the job of the Board of Education. It's to determine what is expected of all individuals that are involved with the board. So, you know, I believe it's really, it's the Board, it's actually the Board to, not only that, but it's also, it's the funnel of the taxpayer, right? It's, it's, the Board of Education is what listens to the taxpayer and what listens to the parents, because let's be honest with you, as parents and as, and as the taxpayer, the only weapon you got is a mailbox. That's all you got. So if it's our job to understand what the needs of the parents and taxpayers are and funnel that through and bring it through, through the actual, through the Board and into the schools, it's, and the, and what's expected and what should be expected is the excellence. It should be the most amount of excellence that you can expect. Hey, if you, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen this, when you look at like, you ask kids to do things, right? You say, "Jump as far as you can," and they will, they'll jump as far as they can, and you mark that line in the sand, and you say, "Beat it." You know what? They will, but you have to be able to put that expectation in place. If you're not putting that expectation in place, it will never happen.
Thank you. Thank you, and our next candidate is Eric Hardey.
Hi. So listening to what other folks are saying, you know, we hear a lot about the Board needs to focus on policy, and we got a detailed list of that, so we really won't need to go into that again, but one thing I think is important is that the Board of Ed needs to get off the balcony and be the choreographer for the dance. And I think that's a big issue right now, that the Board of Ed needs to lead and look at the values, the culture of the community, and then teach that, teach those values to our top brass. Top brass, a superintendent, assistant superintendent, business director, they get their direction from the Board. Looking at teaching them what we value as a town is going to help them then deliver what we think is best for our children. On a day-to-day basis, it really depends upon the level of trust that's going on with the Board and the top brass at any given time. We need to take a very close look at things that are happening within the district, what the community is saying, and if there is a disconnect between what is happening in the community and what is happening in our school system. And the Board needs to set that direction. We need to change the song and have a different dance. I'm going to keep stealing your metaphors, I like that. But one of the things I think we need to look at when we talk about Board policy is looking at curriculum development. As the state moves to the Common Core Standards, which 44 other states have decided to do, we need to also look at building in modifications into that curriculum. So we're looking at students with disabilities, we're looking at students who are gifted and talented, we can push them in different directions, give them the supports that they need, give teachers, involve teachers in this sort of curriculum development, bring in the special education teachers, they're the experts in differentiation, they're the experts in modifying that curriculum. Get them involved in all curriculum development so they can give other teachers a guideline to follow when somebody says, "We need to modify this for this student in any direction." I think that's something the Board should look at setting as a policy when we talk about specific policies. The top objective for the Board, I think, always has to be maintaining the trust of the community, building that trust with every stakeholder in town. We are all stakeholders, whether we have children in this system or not. These are very personal decisions that are going to be affecting us in the years to come. Our children now that are in the school system are going to be our taxpayers tomorrow. We have to get them ready for that. We have to get them ready for that. We have to get them ready to participate in the community to the full extent that they Rebuilding that trust is the key to that, so that the community sees what is going on in the school and says, "Yes, that's why I'm here. This is a reflection of me, of my beliefs, of what I want my children to experience." Part of one of the questions is looking at aspects of preservation and enhancing. There's a lot of amazing things happening now in the school districts. As Veterans Day approaches, a lot of people are concerned about, you know, why Veterans Day, why is that a school day? Many of the schools do some smaller things. Sandy Hook School, where my children have been and one still is, invites veterans in the morning for a little breakfast. My father and my father-in-law both served, I served in the Army National Guard. This is something that needs to be enhanced and brought out more. Looking at what Veterans Day means, teaching Veterans Day, teaching things about veteran issues, especially at the high school level when we have students who are going to be serving in our military. How can we honor them and their choices that they made and the people who have come and gone before that? So these are the types of things I would like to do as a member of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And next, Laura.
What do you see as the role of the Board of Education? For me, there are three primary roles of the Board of Education. They are making and following policies, fiscal responsibility, and approving curriculums. First, I believe the role of the Board should be making and following Board policies. Policy-making is a continuous process of evaluating current policies to ensure that they are still relevant, they are up to date, and reflect where we want to go with the district. Presently, on the Board of Education website, there are 229 policies. It is the Board's role to know, understand, ensure they are compliant with, and review these policies. They are the laws, so to speak, the Board is to govern by, and they need to be taken very seriously. Secondly, it is the Board's role to ensure that the district is fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of Newtown. The Board oversees a $68 million budget. It is the Board's job to understand where the money is being spent. In these tough economic times, we have to stretch the dollar and find more creative solutions for the best educational impact. I believe throwing money at a problem does not always fix the problem, and it is the Board's job to maintain and improve the quality of the school system for being responsible to the taxpayer. The Board of Education needs to make data-driven decisions. I believe it is very important to have public discussion so the public can follow and understand where the money is being spent. Also, the budget and the fiscal planning need to be aligned with the district's strategic plan in order to ensure the money is being spent to achieve what the district has deemed their very own goals. I believe it is the Board of Education's role to hold the district accountable to its own strategic plan. The last role I would like to address is the role of the Board to improve the school curriculum. The Board of Education's own curriculum policy states as follows. The Board of Education has a responsibility to govern the scope and nature of its structural program. Accordingly, the Board will review and take formal action on all the recommendations for the new program offerings, program revisions, and significant program revisions. The Board needs to be more engaged in the curriculum decisions. There needs to be a public discussion regarding curriculum changes so the public of the Board of Education understands what direction the district is moving in. Currently, there are instructional programs without Board approval. In fact, there are current instructional programs put in place that some Board members were not even aware of that existed. How involved and what to what level should Board members be involved, the day-to-day aspects of the education system, to give an example. I believe the Board members do not need to get involved in the day-to-day aspect of the educational system when everything is working fine. However, if there is a problem or an issue brought to the Board, then it should be discussed publicly. Board members need to get involved, understand the issues, and understand the superintendent's plan of action to address these issues. The Board needs to make sure policies are being followed, data-driven decisions are being made, and the public is kept aware of all the steps to address any issues brought to the Board. An example of where the Board needs to get involved is the current Newtown International Centrification Program, also known as NICE. Many of you know of the Chinese initiative. The Board needs to get more involved to understand how far down this program is reaching, how it is affecting the curriculum of our schools. We have Chinese study and music class edited reading, and now Mandarin being taught at Sandy Hook Elementary School. None of this was discussed publicly. More public discussions need to occur so the Board can understand how far-reaching this program is and how does it fit into the current strategic plan. What are the top objectives? Communication is key to any Board success. I feel the Board is not set up to allow people to share their opinions and concerns. The people I have spoken to feel like they are not being heard. The Board of the community should have a shared voice and a common understanding of the major issues and concerns that are happening within their school system. Many discussions happen behind the scenes. The Board also needs to have a better understanding of how the teachers feel and what their perspective is. They are our most important asset. Many times I hear from teachers who are afraid to speak out publicly. Fiscal responsibility. To truly understand where the money is going, the Board of Education needs to have a solid transfer policy in place so the Board of Education and the public can understand and follow the largest part of the town's budget, the $68 million. Currently, the transfer policy gives freedom to the superintendent and the business director to move money around with no accountability to the taxpayer. If the Board of Education is not aware where the money is being spent, then how can they make data-driven decisions when creating a budget? One of the major issues I have in hearing when I campaign is transparency and trust. I believe a solid transfer policy will help restore that trust and give the taxpayers the transparency they look for. Accountability. The Board needs to work with the administration to ensure the strategic plan is being followed and that all policies are being followed. Follow-through needs to occur at all decision made so the Board can understand educational and financial impact. Follow-through is key for the Board to understand these decisions. What aspects of Newtown Public Schools should be preserved? I believe the best part of Newtown School District is the amazing teachers, the quality caring staff, the supportive families, and all the countless volunteer hours given by our PTA members and parent volunteers. Without them, who would we be today? The Newtown community has a tremendous amount of pride and love for all things Newtown. I would like to preserve that love and pride by being a Board member that is devoted to making our school system the very best it could be, by being an advocate for all the residents, and being their voice in creating a top school district within the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. Now, Dan.
In 1995, the Educational Testing Service re-centered SAT scores because the predetermined mean score of 500 was no longer accurate due to the steady and significant decline in scores over the years leading up to that period. As a result, the mean score had to be shifted to a significantly low level, and it was. In essence, that 500 or 600 score on the verbal test could still be attained, albeit with a greater number of incorrect answers. That was a shot over the bow that was generally ignored by the media and certainly by the schools. This event is either forgotten or unknown by very few today. Sadly, America is losing the academic race. Over the years, we have seen our international rankings drop consistently lower. In 2011, our schools are ranked 16th in math and science internationally. This continuing academic enervation shows no sign of abating. Indeed, we have lost our rigor, our academic drive, a decline that manifests itself in many ways in schools throughout America. To name a few telltale signs, I would cite student absenteeism, a loss of personal responsibility, vacations planned during the school year, early dismissals, evening sporting events during the school week, increasing field trips on school days, social promotions, empowerment, grade inflation, exploding honor rolls, schools without failure, pervasive distrust, and a curriculum that has drifted away from the academic sphere and into the realm of socialization skills and trade and technology skills, which are subject to obsolescence and inconsistent with the role of public education. High academic standards to all students must return if we are ever again to face our competition and succeed. In that regard, I propose a rigorous, broad-based liberal arts program with specific required courses as the core or foundation of our educational curriculum for as many students as possible. Educational excellence is a term often inserted in commission statements by schools and districts. In most cases, however, this phrase receives little more than lip service. I propose we give more than lip service, that we practice what we preach, that we create an atmosphere conducive to so-called educational excellence, and institute and promote for all students genuine standards and goals that will produce articulate and thoughtful young men and women who will become the inspired leaders of our country truly needs. Yes, it all begins with education, true education. Without the proper restoration of America's public school academic rigor, we will be facing a future that will threaten our standard of living and ultimately jeopardize our democratic process. American education undoubtedly has experienced unfettered financially draining bureaucratic growth, as well as a cascade of unfunded mandates from Washington. How we address and control this burden will determine whether public education, as we know it, survives. As we weigh our options, we must reject extremist sentiments and step back, assess our situation in a reasoned manner while supporting our core goals and striving to advance academic standards for every student under our roof. Draconian measures built upon fear and distrust have never worked and never will. Ladies and gentlemen, we are running out of time. The rest of the world has shown they take education very seriously. It is time for us to respond with conviction to prioritize quality education for all, to realize the importance of a rigorous education for our children. Let us give a glorious gift to the children of Newtown, an education that will serve them well as they prepare to step upon the world stage. These are our children. This is our country. Let us serve both well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And now, Andrew is going to read John Morris's. You have the timer right beside you, so you're in good shape.
Okay, first, Mr. Morris's disclaimer. He says, "If a member of the PTA reads this, it in no way implies that Hei Shi or the PTA ignores my candidacy. It merely reflects my interest in my assets." Quote, "High expectations foster high achievement," end quote. Curtis Clark and John Morris. "In all 35 years of being in Newtown, every one of my students heard this from me, listened to it constantly, and eventually, before they left me, it was internalized as the concept became reality. It is who I am, and without a doubt, I shall bring the same expectations to the Board of Education table should I be left in. There is no place in my thinking that allows me to offer a fester, no place for each and every individual to continue believing that Hei Shi is incapable of being the best learner that Hei Shi can be, no place for any inconsistencies and gaps that truly exist within and between schools in this district. I cite your inflection, middle school standardized reading and writing scores, scores that fall noticeably short pre- and post-middle education. Remedying this one deficiency lies in establishing and maintaining consistency in modeling more productive education schedules. In this regard, students are admitted into programs that dovetail their regular education goals. It is only late that the administration has begun to implement a program in grades five, six, that will speak to remedy student reading and writing deficiencies with increased instructional time. Granted, the staffing and re-school is not yet optimal, but promises may be rectified as educational oversight. To date, the current seventh and eighth graders who are deficient in these areas are remedied five days a week in literacy classes, while others also attend or read old reading instruction. All of this independent of their language arts education. This comes only after a model of rigorous coordination of personnel and programs was implemented by middle school administration and staff so that these students were able to eventually become very proud of their accomplishments and return to normal locations. There is nothing more satisfying for an educator than to see the smile of satisfaction and success on a struggling student's face, on any face for that matter. Personally, the disturbed students and I had far-reaching academic and effective results in this degree program for intellectually gifted students. Mandated or not, no superintendent or, for that matter, BOE shouldn't have allowed the magnitude of that program to regress to its present day state. To this end, I pledge to use my expertise as a 35-year educator to determine how I can best assist my former colleagues in all grade levels. This in turn will benefit the children. I will visit the teachers and administrators to better understand what their needs are in an effort to relay this information to the superintendent. Those that know me, know this concept of direct and truthful dialogue. After having attended a K-Aid Democratic Association of Board of Education seminar, I was instructed that Boards of Education are not charged with micromanaging the system, but told that information will come directly from the superintendent, since Hei Shi works for the Board of Education. That concept, in all honesty, does not sit well with me. Consequently, if there cannot be an open and honest dialogue established on an ongoing basis, I, as a local BOE member, will have an even more difficult challenge maintaining existing programs and fostering even more productive ones. To live with high expectations of oneself and others is not always easy, but in my opinion, it isn't assessing. John Morris.
Thanks, Jen. Well, we have moved along quite briskly, and I want to compliment the panel for the cooperation shown with the microphone and hope it will, that's good practice, I think, for working on the Board of Education. And speaking of working on the Board, I meant to mention, just to put it in context, the Board of Education has four positions open. One is a two-year term, and that's because the person who had a four-year term resigned prior to the midway point of the two-year term, so this term has to be, I guess, fulfilled. And Keith Alexander and Dan Shea are competing for the one-two-year term. And then we have five Board members, potential Board members, Cody, Laura, Mae, Eric, I can't remember who else, Laura Roach and John Morris. Five of them are competing for three available positions of four-year duration. Now, we do have time. My question to the group, do you have some questions?
We do.
Can pose to the...
That's the app.
And I might just suggest that if we have multiple questions and time to go through, we don't always start at the beginning, or I think if it's the last person who... So you can either start with Dan this time, and then maybe next time start, and we'll get out the other way.
Okay. And we agree that a minute, a minute response?
One minute response, and then everybody off the shot, each question.
We've had three submitted on-site tonight. All right. So the first question, I'll start with Mr. Shea. I know everybody's last. What special talent do you bring to the Board of Ed if elected?
Well, I have great perseverance. I don't give up. I have experience, 35 years of teaching in a high school, eight years down in New Haven, dealing with people from all over the world. I have a perspective on education today that has been developed extremely well with my experiences and how people from China, Korea, South America view our educational system. It gives perspective, as my comments might have indicated. What was the, repeat that?
Special talents.
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 Well, you should talk to my wife. It'll be a very short list. But that's about it.
I think my talent for being on the Board of Ed is that I'm a capable person, and I'm approachable, and I really do want to hear what all your opinions are. I have been attending Board of Education meetings for a year. I've gotten very involved, I take it very seriously. I want to understand how the Board of Ed operates, and I want to be followed in how solutions and how decisions are made. I really do think public participation is huge. I believe that understanding what the public wants and what your concerns are is how me can, as a Board, represent you, and I really do believe that's the biggest talent I have, is being approachable and being... And also, with a finance background, I can be financially responsible and ask tough questions and make sure that they're accountable and that there's follow-through. You can't just make a decision and let it just fall. You have to make a decision, you have to follow that decision, you have to understand that decision so that you make the best educational decisions and finances.
All right, and one big special talent, I can juggle. I kid you not. I've got a decent free ball routine, I can do some clubs, I used to do fire, but I used to have a ponytail too, I'm not saying how that happened. But juggling is a skill that I actually would use all the time as a social worker when I was doing residential social work. I've got to be able to look at all the different stakeholders, what their visions are, what their needs are, and try to meet them. their needs are, and try to meet them and keep all those things in the air at the same time. As a Board of Ed member, hopefully, that's a key talent that I think is needed, be able to focus on multiple things in the area at once.
I want to tell you one thing, that, like, if you tell me I don't answer all the instructions that I've got, that I'll be able to answer one question at a time, so it's not like I have to answer so sure. So, but anyways, like, I think the finance thing is a thing I was about to say, that's why I think I have a pretty strong talent in that area. But I think one of the things that we need to change, and one of the things that I can work to this, is we have to listen to people that vote for us. We have to listen to people that are for us. And, you know, a lot of times, I just don't get that kind of connection with the board currently when I'm there, at the times I've been there. I think that's the one thing I can bring to this whole, to this whole board, I think that's... Because you got to think, I'm new here, right? I have to listen to you guys. I don't have a leadership. I think that's the one thing that I can bring to this, that maybe hasn't lasted, you know, a couple of years.
Talent that I can bring to the Board of Education if I were elected, is that of research. I'm not sure I would call it a talent, but more of a drive that I have. I really, some of my friends call me the super slither, but I do have a passion for finding out information and really doing my homework. And that's something that I take very seriously as a Board of Education member, because it's very important to be able to make decisions based on data, that makes sense. I do data, that's what I do every day, and work with teachers to interpret that and to take action from that. That's what I bring to the board.
I hate to repeat people, but everybody seems to mention data analysis. In fact, that's one of the things I do, I really do work as well. Seems that we have to work through each one of these things and be very thoughtful and considerate, make sure we have information from the real source, what the details are, and work out the decision from those points. I think that's one of the things that I'm good at, is consistently trying to dig until we get the detailed answers that we need.
What are the B O E candidates planning to do to further the arts programs in Newtown? Current new students have one class that we can art, but more is going to be, what is the candidate's vision for expanding our arts program throughout Newtown?
Who would like to start?
Do we start randomly?
Start with the new guy. You know, I think if, incorrect here, I mean, I think if, she'll be on the choice of the students, right? If they want to take art as she wishes her own choice, I mean, you know, we could do our programs in the city, maybe have more of an art fair within Newtown, maybe that's something that we could start with in Newtown, kind of art classes, maybe that would be nice, maybe add some students up, just say, have some art shows, kind of, that's like, it's kind of a lot of that area, but, you know, maybe, you know, but just me, I think it's all about choice, and if, you know, given to the kids choice, if they want to take art, we should make available for them. I think that's something that's a community, and his parents, since parents want, you know, the shield, maybe that's the Board of Education, and make that happen.
Without art, without music, without these types of things, really, what are the kids going to be writing about, talking about, excited about? Not everybody gets excited about the Pythagorean theorem. Not everybody wants to really delve deep into calculus and sine and cosine, all those types of fun things. And as the state pushes forward the student success plans, which you'll see coming up through somewhat frequently, that's a key in, right now, to take a look at what our students are interested in and start looking outside as well as inside the school system, and start developing those connections. Look at WestCon, make, start developing connections all over the place, to really start looking at individualized student needs.
I think first, we have to institute a plan, and we have to figure out what the objectives and goals are. And then, as a board, we have to evaluate and look at all the schools and find out what art is being offered at different levels, because it's not as if you just say, one grade. For example, there's, I believe, there's two art classes currently at Reed. The mission in our class is to help the schools to figure out which schools have what. I remember a orchestra was removed from St. John's, from the original school in fourth grade, it was very devastating. So as a board, we need to understand where these programs are, what this teaching plan is, and collaborate with the superintendent to find what the vision is of these programs, and also understand if we're going to add or remove, what are we going to be, we're going to add something, what are we going to take away? So we have to be very careful, because curriculum, many times I hear from the teachers, they don't even have time to get to the curriculum out of this. So I think analysis has to be done, and voting, decisions, understanding.
I was a band parent for nine years at Newtown High School, and I know the value of the fine arts, music, and art. School systems have, and notorious for cutting in those areas. It hit me when my wife was teaching with me at Masick, and her job was taught, she was an art teacher, my wife is currently an officer of the SCAN, she's a board member of SCAN in Newtown. She hasn't lost her love of art, nor has she lost her knowledge of its importance, and I concur with her wholeheartedly. I would like to see, as a part of a broad-based liberal arts education, an expansion of the fine arts. When my children were in the Newtown marching band, they had a hundred and seventy-five instruments. I don't know what it is now, but it was down to fifty-five at one point. I'd like to know what's going on there. Art and music, the...
I'll give my views on this later.
I'll start by saying that I am the daughter of an art teacher, so if my mom was right here, she would be like, "It's in your blood." I knew she supported arts. And actually, I have a question for that question, because actually, I found, this is my own experience, that the arts is playing strong in Newtown, and, you know, by support certainly that the issue of losing, the screen power is certainly something to consider, but my question would be, what do you buy expand and, and what are you seeing? I've certainly seen very rich art happening at elementary level where I don't work, and also, with the two different art classes, these are, I've seen the life factor has been very strong as well. So again, certainly, we like to listen and hear, because it's very important for our students, especially our different learners.
I think, I think what happens is we tend to focus on the specific educational things that we need to get done for a good base, the things that we've got to finish, and we end up having art and music activities be overly high. It's disappointing, because those things do enrich kids' lives, they like company, enjoy going to school for them. But I, one of the things that I would definitely try and add back, and we've looked at before, and we're looking to look at again, is pushing that music back down to fifth grade. We had music in the fifth grade for quite some time, I think, I'm sorry, fourth grade. We have music in the fifth grade now, because they're great. But if we can push it back down a little bit further, get kids more exposure to it, I think that would be really helpful. They get a lot of different art opportunities, but not everybody gets a chance to take, get involved, and so that would...
Okay, I have two questions here that are the same subject, so, and they're each landed with a different one, but it's basically the same question, so I'm going to read them both. How do the candidates feel about all-day kindergarten for Newtown? Many communities in Connecticut have all-day kindergarten. We have room this year, but the B O E voted against it. Would you recommend all-day kindergarten for next year? Earlier this year, the Board of Education decided not to institute a full-day kindergarten in Newtown. Given that it would increase the cost of education, forced parents do not believe that a full-day program is right for their child, and seek alternatives outside of the public school system, and the studies show no long-term benefits to children. Would you support or oppose full-day kindergarten in Newtown? And if so, why, why not?
Shall I be first? All-day kindergarten is tough. It's, you know, it adds expense to the school system. Is the town ready for that? Are we ready for that kind of expansion of the schools? That discussion needs to be had very openly, very publicly. I also think we need to look at mixing it. Perhaps have all-day ki... If we do have all-day kindergarten, it should be all the schools, but maybe have some half-day kindergarten for students and families who are not quite ready for that yet. Many children are, many children may not be. I think it's really up to the board to work with the town, and then to work with the parents and families, to help them make those decisions.
I also agree, full-day kindergarten needs to have a lot of discussion. We can understand from the public what they feel, and we have to understand as a board, we also have to understand from the superintendent what her vision is for the school regarding full-day kindergarten. At the Board of Ed meetings that I've attended over the past year, there was a lot of debate going on about full-day kindergarten, and the biggest debate is, we're all changing, how much is going to cost the town? Do we have the room? And how is it going to be implemented? There, I think when we do this and finally answer these questions, there's also a different angle that we need to look at. A lot of the public said, "How do we do what the school systems have, a full-day Monday, and a half-day, and a full-day?" A modified full-day program, instead of having a full-day, full-day program. These are things that have to be considered, really, really calculated, and understand the financial impact, and also look at the educational impact, and make sure that their kids are ready for it.
All-day kindergarten in a suburban community is not a surprising request. We have parents traveling miles and miles, babysitting, it's a nightmare. I fully, I'm fully sympathetic with this problem. If there is all-day kindergarten, are the parents screaming for it because they want the children to have a better education? Or is it because they need someone to watch their kids while they're driving white planes? I am sympathetic, this is suburbia. I think I would, we need toward it, the parents have to be ready to pay for it.
This is, this is, this is kind of loaded question, it's considering a form of question. So I'm a little biased towards all-day kindergarten. I think, you know, it all, it all depends on the budget, right? I mean, it's, everything has a cost, and everything has a, maybe with all-day kindergarten, you may actually have to pay for it, but, but everything has costs, right? I mean, if we have a cost, so we have to make sure that we go for it. Now, I can go up into potentially, if you have a kindergarten, maybe parents may be the second half. You know, I mean, we have to find ideas, right? We have to find ways that we can make it work. And if your sample's demand within Newtown to have a full-day kindergarten, you know, maybe a little bit biased towards that. I mean, but that's what makes the B O E a good B O E, is to come up with solutions, come up with ideas, and work to make it work, as opposed to just saying, "It's not going to work, we're not going to do it." Thanks.
Full-day kindergarten is a complex issue, and I will say that I have been, actually, I was an art teacher for four years, and I have been involved with the, with the kindergarten in this district. It's heavily emotional for parents, with parents on both sides of the issue, and it's challenging to implement, especially in this economic climate. I would say that it would be something that we definitely should be considering, it's something that our parents are considering all around, and they're buying money, and there's certain benefits. There's also quite a large cost, especially coming from a half-day program to a full-day program. That's the facilities, and also the education.
The full-day kindergarten has been looked at a lot, lots of administrators and lots of teachers, mostly educationally people are interested in it, they think it's probably good at it, and one of the big reasons is because the long-term educational goals that we're all signing up for are higher and higher, the standards go up and up, and it's hard to teach the kids what they need to get used to in that short kindergarten day. So a full-day kindergarten is very helpful. Obviously, trying to implement it in town, what we had last year, was a good feeling, a good understanding for the issue, and a good feeling that that was the right thing to do educationally, but we did not have the money to do it. Every year, from this point on, I expect that to come up and be an issue until it can be implemented. At some point, the town needs to find the money, I think it really has to be done.
I'd like to do one more. As the season approaches, what do you see as a financial priority for the Board of Let's close the eyes.
Okay, thank you. Well, let me think. Okay. How about we maintain our class size? I think it's extremely important, if I were to enter into the realm of, say, the high school, or I'm very familiar with things, at least the high school I taught at, I would recommend for all English teachers, one period for correcting papers. Every student should get at least one extensive essay per week. I'd like to see money put into that. Writing, speaking, basic rhetoric is essential to an education, the ability to speak, the ability to write, communicate clearly, is vital. Anything that would enhance those skills of children would be number one priority on my, in my board.
And regarding budgets, I think the board will make sure they understand what money is, spend all of the money, and understand where the money is going. And in regards to the budgets, we have to fully look at the, the kind of school administrator, and make sure that the goals and the budget are in mind together. And also, look at where there's extra, and understand what we can do with that. For example, Debbie Lynamine had not the educational assistance. There was, because it's not supposed to be fire, eight thousand dollars is not an unemployment. Where does that leave going? How we need to know as a budget, how to budget for the next year? We need to know, should we get the way it is at hand? We have many other decisions, we have to look at the budget, we have to evaluate and analyze the budget, and talk before the council.
I guess my priority would be protecting and guarding instructional time. That is key. As standards go up and up and up, we have to protect that time in order to give our students a chance to learn what we are expecting them to learn. If all-day kindergarten happens, which is actually a district goal for next year, we have to take a look at that. How do we guard that time and invest in that time and protect it? Because it's near and dear.
So, looking at the budget, I think there's, you know, of course, there's obviously the importance of having, you know, the teacher-student ratio remain as low as possible, but I think it's also, we have to try to find ways to find certain amounts of ways. I mean, the last time I was in front of the Board of Education, I made a sort of comment about not looking at the curriculum, like, you should do your literature goals. So in that kind of situation, I mean, they have to really find ways. Like, we can cut the big things, right? But as anybody runs a household, you can't cut the big things, and you can't get carpet, you can't get a mortgage, which you kind of, kind of, kind of around the corners, find the things that are making realize, you know, making realize efficiently, and then re-allocate those funds, at least, try to make sure that...
The people in all this debate that they are putting right decisions when you challenge them, as I was here. The most, my priority would be making sure that the money goes to classroom, and it goes where the students... There are certainly, probably, will be things that we need to have, but that's one thing that, that we can't, we can't lose. Kids don't get... Kids don't get third grade again, they don't get a second chance at that. So it's really important that those decisions that are being made are not directly affecting the work of the classroom and annual time in a day to make students.
Last year, the Board of Education, on a long time, what was called a same service as a budget, the idea was to try and figure out exactly what the amount of expenditures absolutely had to be to keep exactly the same number of teachers in the classroom and the same number of classes being, same things being offered. That makes it very hard to keep it in. But I have to agree that keeping those teachers in the classroom is a top priority. We went through last year and did my best to try and keep the teachers in the classroom where possible. Those teachers are the ones who directly affect our education of our kids. Everything else has to be secondary to that. So that's got to be where we go for changes.
Wow, I'm amazed at your sense of timing. I really thought it was going to be a lot more difficult, but you were right on it in your answer, and then I heard that beep, beep, beep. I think we got through all of the questions, so there were none so similar remarks about emailing things, questions that were unanswered, we can disregard.
Well, we did receive some via our email address that we will forward to the candidates.
Okay. And I think the handout, does it have the candidate's email address?
It has the political party website address and all their email addresses, I believe, from all.
So there's some direction on the handout. People who may be watching this at home tonight or next few days. I mean, the election really is right around the corner. And, you know, when you think about, what did we mention tonight, about excellence in international education and this type thing? It is essential, I think we all can agree on this, that you want people who are willing to run for Boards of Education. A Board of Education is somewhat of a uniquely American institution. And it's vital that people be willing to run for Board of Education. And I think in the context of our current society, I think the people who are before us tonight all deserve a round of applause from the Board. The reason is to volunteer and seek the opportunity to expend a significant amount of their time as a volunteer working on behalf of the children in Newtown. With that, I think our event is going to come to a close. I thank you everybody. Oh, I'm sorry. I knew I would not get through this without a major.
We're not ending early.
So they have, is it one?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Is there a particular word that you'd like to go or revert to the original?
Well, the last question we started with.
Don't you make it three minutes?
All right, we'll start. Keith, we're going to start with you, we'll go right down the table, and we're going to keep the two minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you for providing the forum. This was, I think, really great to be able to talk about these things and have the questions being able to be told as always good. I think that what we want to talk about is what, what challenges are coming up? It's been mentioned a couple times, the curriculum standard. At all times, the Board of Ed wants to review curriculums. But this is becoming particularly special because the connectors joined onto the federal standards for curriculums. And we now need to integrate those sort of things into our classroom, into our curriculum, each individual thing. And that's where we need to come up with the specific things that we can change and alter without losing what we already value. We already value the way our kids are getting through their math classes. But we're going to need to make some adjustments in the order that we give things because that's what the new regulations are. We can do that, we have teachers who understand it. But it is something that we have to work through, so that's going to be one of our things going forward. I'd just like to say, what John said about volunteer, it's a volunteer job and it goes late into the night. And you might think that it's maybe too much of a burden, but I'll tell you, it is rewarding, particularly when we have meetings where the students or the teachers come in. Students come in and they show us some of their achievements, we see projects from students. We see the teachers come in and they show us the kind of programs that they're setting up, what's going on in classroom. And that is the kind of thing that makes you realize, everybody, whether you agree with their particular item or not, everybody is really trying to work for the kids. That's what we're all there for. That's what all these people want to do, is work to help your kids, our kids, be educated the way we'd like to get them.
Again, I would think, with the day and the day, the Board of Education's opportunity is excellent. And I'm very grateful for this. I believe that because I'm on the dance floor and balcony in my professional career life, I also consider Newtown as a Board of Education member who thoroughly understands the workings of the school district. I have carefully considered my ability to serve and believe that I'm an academic as a board, and I'm a expert case as a steward of the district. This is, this is an important election as a Board of Education at Central Crossroad. I certainly hope you will carefully consider my candidacy. But more importantly, I hope you will express your voice, I believe, at the polls on November 8.
Thanks. Basically, you know, just to close your remarks, you know, as I said, budgets are very difficult. And we're going to need people in individuals and work and have understanding of finance, business issues, and accounting. All the numbers are in over this, it's going to be very difficult. And it's, you know, there are only people who are pure money that have the financial expertise to really honestly handle, you know, and be able to do the numbers and where they understand the problem on other scales. That being said, also, I mean, I think another thing that should be considered is that we have to have a role in the board, we have to have dialogue. There has to be a dialogue between the parents and Board of Education. For too long, it's just been completely shut off. And the parents have had voice, others, always been a long history. You go in a board and you talk to the board and stop, sit there. We have to change that. And it's one of the things I really believe that we have to move forward. So, in closing, I hope, you know, you guys have a great choice. Some of you guys have taken good choices out there in the Board of Education. Because like I said, this is one of two, you have to make a real definite change with the Board of Education within Newtown's schools.
All right, so I'm going to do a little head in on the handout. The website for the Dems is a little incorrect, it'll take you to the Pennsylvania folks. So if you're looking at your handout where it says NewtownDemocrats.org, it should be NewtownCTDemocrats.org. It's okay.
Our apologies.
No touch. I don't know, I have a little. So it's not attention and detail that I think, you know, the board needs right now. I think, you know, looking at my back, my first career was in social work, policy administration, looking at how government works, how public programs are run. Trying to bring in, buy in, and have every stakeholder invested in the value system that we as a community expect out of our school system. And the board needs to lead the way. It needs to set the tune, it needs to choreograph the dance, and set things in motion. And that's what I'm hoping to do on November 8. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for coming out, and I appreciate your time. I think it's very important, maybe the things we all talked about, communication, transparency, fiscal responsibility, those charges that we all have a responsibility for and to prove to you that we're going to listen to what you say and how you feel so that we can represent you and create a hostile district to investigate. I think we all have very different, all different perspectives and different backgrounds. I think what is part of a board is being able to collaborate, to be able to express opinions, to share ideas, to talk publicly. So everyone in the room, and everyone in the board, I can hear what's going on. I think that's very important. I think it's very important to collaborate with other boards within the town. There are many resources that are out there, many people who have been dedicated and in service for a long time. We need to tap those resources, understand where our town is going on the education side and on the town side. I think I have background in studies and I have background in sales. I think that I hope I can be approachable and that you can come to me or anybody else on the board, whoever gets a little bit, and be able to be heard and live in Newtown, I mean, if you're going to represent the community, being part of creating best district, but invisible, responsible, they said. And giving the phone communication they asked before, and giving the technical district to handle all of this, I think, thank you.
The United States Department of Education's 1983 publication, "A Nation at Risk," spelled out our academic decline, but to no avail as our falling international academic ranking clearly manifests. If our graduates are not familiar with history, or fail to see its importance, or are difficulty with the grammar of our language, and cannot write or speak lucidly or anthologically, or rarely read unless forced to do so, or only when a text message pops up, or view science as boring or irrelevant for nerds, or cannot perform basic computations without a calculator, or do not understand or appreciate art or music, we and they are both in trouble. An associate dean at Yale recently stated to me that Yale no longer considers...